Now I'll call to order this special meeting of the Board of Directors for the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority. It is, what time is it? A little after one on November 2nd, 2023. My name is Drew Combs. I am the Chair, 104 to be exact. I'm the Chair of the Board. And so we'll do roll call. I see Director Abrika is here. Director Ku is here. I'm here, Director Combs. And so we do meet quorum. I think, we believe Director Eisenberg will be joining.
That is my understanding.
Okay. But we'll proceed and kick off with a meeting, given that we have met quorum. And so with that, I'll move on to approval of the agenda. First open up to see if there is any public comment specifically on the approval of the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais to see if there is a motion or a second, or any additional comments on approval of the agenda. Director Abrika.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a first and a second on a motion to approve the agenda. And so I'll do a roll call vote. Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Ku.
Yes.
Director Combs is also a yes. And so that's three, three yeses. And so the, the agenda is approved. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item Three, which is approval of the minutes, meeting minutes, the minutes of September 28th, regular board meeting, and September 20th, special close session meeting. And so I'll open it up for public comment on this agenda item, which is approval of the minutes. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this topic? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment on approval of the minutes and bring it back to the dais. And since I want to check in with Director Ku, since you were here, are you comfortable? Because we'll need all approving the minutes, correct? All present commissioners or directors? Are you comfortable approving the minutes even though you weren't here? Or would you prefer pass? And then we can, we can take this up at a later meeting.
I did watch the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. But the closed session is not part of it, right? Because I wasn't there.
Yeah. So the, the, so the minutes from the closed session are just essentially that it happened, right? Or?
Okay. I, yeah. I'm comfortable voting on it.
Okay.
Because I was watching the meeting.
All right. Okay. Totally cool. Well, then, given that, bringing it back to the dais, if there's no additional comment, I will move to approve the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting and the special close session for September 28th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second from Director Abrika, and we'll go do a roll call vote. Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Ku?
Yes.
Director Combs is also a yes. And so the meeting minutes are approved from September 28th, with all three commissioners, all three directors present, voting in favor. Okay. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Is there? No. Okay. We'll move on to general public comment. So if anyone, I do have a public comment card from, I think, Hamilton Hitchens? And so we'll take that. And if anyone else would like to make a public comment after that, then please, or indicate online that you'd like to make a public comment. And you have three minutes, right? Three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Hamilton Hitchens. I live in Palo Alto. We bought our house there in 1998, just before the, actually 97, just before the 98 flood in February. So I was out at three in the morning while our streets were underwater. And, and 400 properties got damaged. Unfortunately, according to the Palo Alto Daily Post, and this is new information, the city of Palo Alto is now considering delaying the building, the reconstruction of the Newell Bridge and not doing it in the summer of 2024. This is new information, but according to the Daily Post, it was from a staff employee at the city of Palo Alto. So obviously, it needs to be confirmed. However, this has big implications for the flood control for San Francisco Kito Creek because somebody might have thought that because Newell Bridge doesn't, isn't currently the weak, the critical point for flood control, delaying it wouldn't be a problem. But it is a problem because all the subsequent projects are dependent on, first, the Newell Bridge being done. So it effectively pushes all the other projects, delays them at least a year. So it is a big problem. The city was saying they're going to do it even if they haven't received the Caltrans So I don't know what happened, but I would like to push back on that. I hope the leadership on the council will also push back on that because it's really important. A second issue, which is not as important as that one, is that there is a lot of sediment buildup under the 101 and right in front of the 101 bridge. And it does create some back pressure. And while there are different theories about how impactful that is, Caltrans does not have a way to issue a permit that will allow the Valley Water to go in and remove that sediment. And it's also important to remember, not only Palo Alto, but also East Palo Alto upstream of that can flood as a result of that. So I think that's, you know, we have two problems with Caltrans right now. One is they're not giving us a letter that says we're going to get the funding in 2024, and they're moving really slowly on it. And secondly, they don't have a method for addressing this sediment buildup under their bridges. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Hitchens, for your comment. Also, let the minutes reflect that at 108. Director Eisenberg joined us. All right. Are there any other public comments? Any online? No. Okay. Seeing no other comments, then I'll close general public comment. I don't know if Director Abrika, I know on the sediment issue, you have taken a lead.
I think there is a, there is a report because we did.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, yeah, we held a very, I think, very good meeting to try to make progress.
All right. So stay tuned. We will, we will be discussing the sediment issue. And, and I don't know, I can only say that the possible delay of the Newell Bridge, I learned of it when you learned of it and through the same method that you learned of it. And so I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but if there is anyone who wants to, because that is not part of any portion of our later meeting, the possible delay of the Newell Project, if there is anyone who wants to respond to that, I will provide them the time. I cannot respond for the reasons I said specifically, which is I will just tell you the information you just told us, because that's as much information as I know.
Nor can I.
All right.
Wait, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank the public speaker for bringing up these important points. And, and it's so important. And I agree, these are concerns. I think we all agree, these are concerns, and that we will look into the answer for this. Because, you know, sometimes, sometimes the Daily Post gets it wrong, but they, they often get it right, often they get it wrong. So it really, it's impossible to know. So, but yeah, I think we all agree, we need to get down to the bottom, to the bottom of this. And yes, the Newell Bridge is important. And so is sediment. I mean, not having it. Thank you.
Cool. Yeah. Thanks for those comments. And yeah, I'll also just highlight to your point, yes, a lot of the other things that the JPA has talked about and is thinking about, has spent lots of time and effort trying to bring to fruition, is dependent on, on the Newell Bridge project. They are all dependent on each other. Okay. With that, I will close public comment and go on to Agenda Item Four, which is the guest presentations, where representatives from Caltrans will provide an update on the status of and plans for their San Francisco Kito Creek bank stabilization project. I'll first open it up to public comment on this. And I do think I have, from Mr. Hitchens, again, a public comment on this, this item. And then we'll open up to anyone else who would like to provide public comment.
Okay. I have, I have two comments on it. First of all, you know, when I do public comment at the city of Palo Alto, they do the staff presentation first. It allows us to make much more informed comments, because now I have to guess what Caltrans Trades is going to say before I do it. But I'll make my comment, and then they can address it with the caveat that I did not look at their presentation. I have no idea what they're going to say. You know, this, this delay is problematic because there is a potential, here's what, here's my interpretation. They, they will stabilize the bank if there's major floods while there's a lot of water in the creek. So we'll find out if that's true. I can't tell yet. But if they wait until there's a lot of water in the creek and the ground is really soggy, that may make the stabilization less effective. I also worry, and they can address this in the presentation, whether any of that material would go into the creek and impede the flow of the water in any way. So I'm looking forward to the presentation. And again, I hope you consider restructuring it so we get to hear the presentation before we make comments in the future. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll address that is, do we have any other public comment on this item online? Okay. Okay. Let's, let's cycle through the public comment.
Tom, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up Hamilton's comment. I did look at the presentation that is proposed by Caltrans, and one of the things that is missing is a diagram of what the creek cross-section would look like under the bridge if they were able to implement their desired long-term fix to support of the bridge. So I'm hoping that they can address that and show us what the intrusion or other changes to the channel will look like with that cross-section. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay. And to your point, Mr. Hitchens, I'm, we tend to do things a little informally at the JPA. We can certainly have another public comment after the presentation. I want to be a little bit mindful of people who may have some time constraints and to provide them an opportunity to, to speak, just, just in general, because this is the first time that the JPA is getting this presentation, although it's something that has been out in the public for, for some time, which there has been some concern of. But we can certainly have, you can hear what they have to say, and then, and then come back and make an additional public comment. Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to the Executive Director, who will introduce our guest speakers for, presenters for today.
Thank you, Chair Combs. It's my pleasure this afternoon to introduce Robert Bernard, who is Caltrans Deputy Chief of Rail Design and Construction for the Caltrans Organization. Mr. Bernard oversees the strategic execution of system-wide capital projects, and he joins us today to provide an update on the train bridge or the trussel replacement project. Joined also from Caltrans is Navdeep Dalual, to his right, who is the Government and Community Affairs Officer. And also joining us online is Mike Boomsma, the Senior Project Manager for this project. With that, we are here to hear Mr. Bernard's presentation.
Thank you, Executive Director Bruce. Good afternoon, Chair Combs, Directors. As noted, Rob Bernard, Deputy Chief, Design and Construction for Caltrans. First, Caltrans would like to express our thanks to the Board for this opportunity to share an update on their status of stabilizing the bank for the San Francisco Kito Creek Bridge. And second, our team would publicly like to thank Executive Director Bruce and her team for their consistent collaborative efforts and the deep knowledge and expertise they have brought to bear to help us on this journey to repair this bank. As noted, we're here today to share information on the status of our efforts to stabilize the north bank of the San Francisco Kito Creek Bridge near Caltrans Railroad Bridge and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge. As noted by Executive Director Bruce, we do have two of our team members here today, one virtual and one in person. Next, please. This Board has a deep understanding of the creek and the watershed, but for others that may be joining us, this creek is the border at this location between two cities, the Menlo Park and Palo Alto, and two counties, San Mateo and Santa Clara. And Caltrans Railroad Bridge is directly adjacent to the historic El Palo Alto Tree and the El Palo Alto Park. And as this Board well knows, this is an environmentally sensitive area. Next, please. For context, there we go. For context, this image is of the north bank, the Menlo Park side of the creek. You can see Caltrans Bridge on the left. You can see the Alma Street Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge on the right, and you can see the Menlo Park's drainage outfall between those two bridges. As we all know, last winter storm season brought an unprecedented amount of rain to this region that resulted in changed conditions that impacted the north embankment of the creek in this area. If you look closely at this image, you can see the dirt embankment is in a near vertical condition. Now a moment of engineering. For soil slope to be stable, it's typically graded at a two to one. That's two feet horizontal to one feet vertical. The typical recommended maximum slope is about a one and a half to one. Consequently, if no action is taken, the continued erosion would undermine these structures. Next, please. Given these conditions, Caltrans set forth to find a solution to proactively stabilize this north creek bank during the dry season of 2023 to protect these community and cultural assets. Certainly, Caltrans could not have done this work alone. We were privileged to coordinate with our fellow city, agency, and institutional partners to move forward a potential solution. We work closely with San Francisco Kito Creek's Joint Powers Authority, Executive Bruce and her team. We work with the city of Menlo Park and the city of Palo Alto. And I wanted to pause just a moment here and really give our sincere thanks to two people. One is Tanisha Werner at Menlo Park. She's the Deputy Director of Public Works. And the other is Holly Boyd, who is the Assistant Director of Public Works and their teams and their valued partnership and leaning in hard on this project. And we sincerely appreciate all their efforts. Next, please. Just a couple examples of that partnership and collaboration. You've got three government agencies, Caltrans, City of Palo Alto, City of Menlo Park, and of course, all their attorneys, trying to get together and do a tri-lateral agreement in a short period of time. And all those teams leaned in hard, got them approved, and initially approvals from their councils. We also had consistent updates and feedbacks on the complex technical, legal, and key engagement milestones as the design progressed from a mere concept, working with the multiple regulatory agencies into the final design. And we received all the necessary permits from the city of Palo Alto and the city of Menlo Park. Next, please. So we sought to do the permanent stabilization solution in the dry season of 2023. We had five key objectives there. One is we want to stabilize the creek bank to support the bridge and the drainage outfall to protect those community assets. We wanted to make sure we tried to reduce the hundred-year flood elevation and the creek velocity, not putting back more than what the river took away, but putting back what was there previously and to slow the creek velocity down and to not raise the elevation, the flood elevation. We also wanted to improve the water quality for the critical habitat. Speaking of habitat, we also wanted to enhance the aquatic and upland species habitat. And so we worked closely with the resource agencies to find a solution that would do that. But we also wanted to focus on more than just the north bank. There's also the south bank, where the El Palo Alto Tree is, and take a look what needed to be done there to make sure we stabilized the toe of that concrete embankment as well. Next, please. So our design was developed based on early and iterative consultations with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, California's Department of Fish and Wildlife, and San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. The team worked hard to prepare the permit applications and submit them as early as possible. After we went out and we surveyed, we developed the design, coordinating with those three regulatory agencies and others, and the hydraulic modeling that went along with each one of those iterations. Next, please. The project did receive permits from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, from the regional water quality boards, and all the necessary permits from Menlo Park and Palo Alto. However, Caltrans continues to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to obtain their Section 404 permit. Caltrans was not able to implement that permanent stabilization solution in the 2023 dry season because we didn't get the Army Corps of Engineers permit. Next, please. So with that, what are we doing? So we are preparing an emergency response plan in collaboration with the city and our agency partners. We have our plan in place to monitor the bridge. We're signed up for the USGS water alerts, making sure that our inspectors, our engineers inspect the bridge during rate events, and looking at installing monitors like we do when we do a construction next to, we have two bridges next to each other, we put a monitors on the one we're not working on. Making sure that if conditions warrant, we'll be ready to install a temporary stabilization solution. We do have a contractor under contract, standing by, ready to go to work. However, we will continue to pursue the remaining permits so we can implement the permanent solution in the 2024 dry season that begins June 15th of next year. Next, please. As noted, we are preparing our emergency bank stabilization response plan in close collaboration with Menlo Park, Palo Alto, the San Francisco Kito Creek JPA. We want to make sure that our emergency operations centers are well coordinated. Who calls who, who's got what phone number, and what our plans are, staying coordinated. We had a meeting on Monday with the Executive Director of Valley Water to make sure that our emergency command centers are in sync, to make sure we've transferred our phone numbers as well. Now, for the potential emergency bank stabilization, what are our key objectives there? There are five of them. One, of course, is to protect the communities and cultural assets. The second is to make sure it's constructable in a short period of time during high creek flows. We all acknowledge that wasn't our preferred alternative, but that's where we are today in case we need to. We also want to minimize encroachment in the creek to not exacerbate flood risk, being careful to only put back what the river took away. We also want to be stewards of public funds, seeking to use methods and materials that can be reused in the 2024 dry season stabilization project. We also realize this is an environmentally sensitive area, and we want to minimize the overall footprint and impacts to water quality and the aquatic habitat that are in that area. Next, please. Chair Combs, Directors, happy to answer any questions you may have.
First, Mr. Bernard, thank you personally for coming, making the time to make this presentation and for the presentation. I'll bring it to the dais for questions, and then we'll, we'll open it up for a second round of public, public comment. Does that work for everyone? Okay. Okay. So we'll bring it to the dais and Director Eisenberg.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you for this presentation. I'm even more confused than I was before. Can you go to slide number, I have many questions, I apologize for this, but there's just kind of some internal inconsistencies that I really want to kind of sort out. So design solution, I think that's page number eight. So when you described this solution, you talked about reducing velocity. So have you been consulting with scientists or environmental, environmentalists on this?
Director Eisenberg, appreciate the question. As part of the permit process, we went through a series of iterative designs in order to model it hydraulically, to take a look at what the flow of the creek was before and the flow of the creek.
That was kind of a rhetorical question. I apologize.
The answer was yes.
So, because I have a feeling why maybe you didn't get that permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. Reduce velocity is 100% inconsistent with your other goals. Reducing velocity will harm water quality. It will harm habitat for aquatic and upland species, and it, 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 nothing good happens from, negative consequences come from reducing velocity. Velocity is what keeps water clean. If you see a rapids, that a rapids is actually the most effective means of cleaning water. A waterfall is the most effective means of cleaning water, much more effective than a treatment plant. And I say that as, you know, a Board Director for Valley Water, which, you know, runs a number of treatment plants. A treatment plant is like an oxygen factory that is used instead of trees. Trees and rapids are, you know, the earth's most effective solutions. Trees create oxygen and reduce carbon. Rapids clean water. They also make water habitable for species. So the speed of water is not the problem. The problem is the blockages to that water. That is the problem. Reducing the speed of water, you might as well be draining the creek. It is terrible for the environment. And part of Valley Water's job is to oversee our natural habitat, which is, if you haven't noticed, we are in huge crisis on our planet, and I will never get behind anything where the, where the plan is to reduce velocity. And I doubt that the Army Corps of Engineers would either. So really, what we're talking about is, is letting the water flow freely, giving the water enough room so it doesn't overflow onto banks and harm residences and businesses and streets. That is what we need to do. We need to remove blockages. So I'm not on board with this design solution. This was exactly what I feared. I mean, this is like the worst possible solution. Oh, we'll just reduce velocity. That doesn't, plus, if you try to fight with a stream, guess who's going to win? I'll just tell you, the stream. Nature is more powerful than we are. You try to reduce velocity, and Valley Water tried this, the whole water industry tried this. It doesn't work. So, okay, second thing, so I, I, I think that's a, I think that's a recipe for failure. Second thing is that you talked about a tri-party agreement. Who are those three parties? That is a real question.
We had Caltrans, Menlo Park, and Palo Alto in that agreement because we're doing improvements on all three of those.
Okay. So why is Stanford being consulted here? Why did Stanford approve your plans?
Stanford was part of our ongoing discussions. It was noted in the slides.
Why?
Pardon me?
Why?
Why was Stanford part of the discussion?
Because you didn't even mention really, you didn't list Valley Water as a party that you ran these plans by. Why would you run it by Stanford? What does Stanford have to do with this?
Stanford is just a, a community stakeholder in the area.
But we're not. Valley Water isn't.
We coordinated with the San Francisco Kito Creek JPA.
Which I'm a director of, and I'm at Valley Water.
I understand. And Valley Water is a member of that organization.
Okay. I just, I just am concerned that you're giving Stanford a say in this without getting anything from Stanford in exchange. Because Stanford, we need a bunch of stuff from Stanford. So if you're catering to Stanford, I think that's problematic. I do. Their Stanford is a huge, is like the richest entity around, and they basically can do whatever they want. We don't need to kowtow to them. We don't need to kowtow to them. You know, they, you know, it's, I'm troubled by this. You know, so did Stanford actually make any changes or have any influence on these plans?
I would have to, I'd like to address a couple of your comments if I could. One is the stream velocity. It has to do with the velocity at the bank infacement and trying to balance that out so you don't have areas of, of high velocity and low velocity. Looking at the hydraulic maps to more even that flow out and make it more uniform, but, but hang on.
I don't see, that's interfering with nature again.
If we could let my senior project manager, who's more the engineer in the room, answer that question, Mike Boozma, and then if I could have Navi Dollywall, who was in the meetings with the various stakeholders, talk about our engagement with San Francisco, with Stanford and others. So, Mike, could you address Director Eisenberg's question about the creek velocity?
Good afternoon, Director Eisenberg. This is Mike Boozma, Senior Project Manager with Caltrain. We, we met roughly monthly with Stanford, with Kevin Murray of the, of, of the JPA, and with the cities of Menlo Park and Palo Alto. Stanford is a directly adjacent neighbor to Caltrain on the upstream side of the San Francisco Creek, and the improvements go all the way up to Stanford's property line and may even require temporary encroachment onto Stanford's property. So it was essential to include Stanford in our coordination as a good neighbor. And I understand that Stanford also has other projects along the creek, and we wanted to identify any interdependencies between this project and Stanford projects to prevent any conflicts or, or schedule conflicts that could impact any of the projects. But directly to your question.
Yeah, so that doesn't answer my question because, well, it kind of does, thank you for that. But Valley Water has even more interest in the creeks and owns even more property adjacent to the creeks and has much more expertise. So did you run this by Valley Water? There was a comment that the, someone met with the executive, the Executive Director of Valley Water, but there is no Executive Director of Valley Water. Maybe she meant the CEO. Okay, he's the CEO of, yeah, so that was just a little confusing to me. And so you just had one meeting, did it, did this, did it get reviewed by staff?
We, Mike, if you could talk about our engagement with the San Francis, San Francisco Regional Water Quality Board?
I'm talking about Valley Water.
I, I understand that. But Mike was the one that managed those meetings, so I'm asking him to answer your question.
But I'm, but my question is about Valley Water, not about San Francisco. Valley Water is the Santa Clara Valley Water District, Santa Clara.
Understood. So to answer your question more directly, no, Stanford did not provide any comments or require any changes to the design of the San Francisco Creek joint, the, the bank stabilization. And to answer your question about Valley Water's involvement, we met with Rick Callender and his executive team in the second quarter of 2023, I, I don't have a specific date in mind, and invited them to join us in our meetings with the city of Menlo Park, the city of Palo Alto, and the San Francisco Joint Powers Authority. And Valley Water preferred to maintain their involvement on this creek bank stabilization project through their membership in the Joint Powers Authority.
That's news to me, but I will, thank you for saying that. That's usually, that, that's usually not how Valley Water works. Like many government agencies, it's usually quite happy to get involved in the planning of these things and given its, its huge number of scientists and engineers. It seems like Valley Water would be well-equipped to handle some of this, so I guess I.
I do want to chime in.
Okay, sorry, so I'm.
He said that Valley Water decided that they would, their involvement through the JPA. We, we have no specific evidence of anything to the contrary.
I, I am totally not saying that he's lying, I apologize.
Unless there's evidence to the contrary, let's, let's move on.
I apologize, last quick question. Thank you for that. I'm gonna, I'll take your word for it, and I apologize for saying otherwise. I'm just gonna, you know, follow up with them, is what I meant.
Yeah, I believe, I believe our, our Executive Director, Michelle Bouchard, I think it was like a May 28th or so was the meeting.
I'm taking your word for it, I am, yeah, so it's, you know, the directors, I mean, the chairs, right? And I, and I clearly see that I implied otherwise, and that was definitely wrong of me, so I didn't. So, and I will follow up. That was my annoyance with a different party, not with you. So sometimes I have to clarify that, and my bad. Okay, so what were the reasons that the Army Corps gave you to, for the rejection of the permit? And that's my last question, I swear.
I, I appreciate the, the question. It really wasn't a rejection of the permit. The, the Army Corps of Engineers determined that it was necessary to seek the review of the historic preservation issues and seek approval from the State Historic Preservation Office, from SHPO. Really answering the question, will the embankment stabilization efforts below the bridge impact the historic character of the bridge in El Palo Alto Tree? And so it was a decision within their discretion to make the call themselves or to seek that opinion from SHPO, and they elected to get it from SHPO, which extended the duration necessary to get the permit.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense. I think the Palo Alto Tree is really important to us, and sometimes there are indigenous relics under there too. So, and that's also worth preserving, so I appreciate you going through that process, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and some of the, some of my questions had been answered in this first part. So Mike, so it does sound like you, you have a plan, the permits are in order, other than the Army Corps, in order to do a permanent, let's say a permanent fix in the next dry season, not, not now. Okay, so then there's this question of emergency. So you also have kind of a short-term emergency plan that in, you know, if it were to happen, hopefully it won't, that there's more erosion happening that you'd be able to do something. So, you know, my question is, because it reminds me a little bit of some incident some years ago in Espaolo Alto, when you're dealing with all these jurisdictions and stuff. So for the emergency, who gives permission for you to go in and do that? Or is it basically, yeah, who gives you permission for that if you're still waiting for the permission from the Army Corps to do the permanent? Or what is it that you, what's the word, that, that you call out or you say, look, because it is an emergency, we're going in? Could you tell me a little bit about that? So you cannot go in to start doing the permanent one, but, you know, you can go in to do the emergency, which to me, sounds like if it were to, if there were to be an emergency and you are able to go in, why can you not go in now and prevent the emergency? And I, you know, because there was a similar case in Espaolo Alto for us, that it got to the point where community people living by the creek, including me, were saying, we're just gonna go in? We're gonna go in. If you want to put us in jail, put us in jail. We're gonna go in and build a wall of sandbags, which at this point, it was, you know, probably not as, well, it was serious because it could have broken into the garden area, gardens area. But anyway, so that, that's, that's, that's one part I learned that time, the circularity of these things that, so, yeah, so who, who's given you permission to go in?
Director, I appreciate the question. So there's a couple of things. First, the emergency is a imminent threat to the health and safety of the public. So if there's an imminent threat, that constitutes the emergency. Our board has delegated the emergency authority on a monthly basis to our Executive Director, Michelle Bouchard, to take any necessary action as a result of that emergency. So we have a system in place where, under that authority from the board, delegated to our Executive Director, that our Director of Engineering, based on his best professional judgment, there is an imminent threat to the public's health and safety. We have a contractor who is working currently on our Guadalupe River Bridge that we have under contract for this temporary emergency repair or bank stabilization.
Right. And so we're. So, and what prevents the Executive Director or your board from saying, let's just go do it as a prevention measure? And if it doesn't happen, we at least were prepared ahead of time? And then, since we're gonna do the permanent one, then this can be used, as you stated, some of that work could be used. You know, the reason I'm, and if there's anything we can do to help you, I'm telling you, because I went through that one a long time ago. I had to go literally beg and threaten the Director of Emergency Services in the county to say, look, it's not an emergency yet, but many of us who watch the creek all the time feel like walls of mud are gonna keep falling in that area, it happens to be the curve of the creek. The water from Palo Alto comes out full blast, and so that could just, you know, puncture a hole into that wall of mud. You know, I think he took a chance and he finally, he came down and he checked and he called, I don't know who called, he called all kinds of people. Finally, almost in the middle of the night, he said, okay, you, you can declare an emergency. And based on that, we were able to at least do something, you know? So I'm just saying that, that you might probably experiencing the same frustration that we experienced with this perverse logic that makes government look bad. You know, I think, and even the newspapers sort of made fun of it, and I wish they wouldn't. I wish they would take it more seriously and try to see what they could do to lobby the powers that be that are, that are holding this, like, so I guess, you know, this might be a legal question, but, or I don't know what it is, but does your Executive Director and your board have the authority to just start doing it in the name of preventing an emergency? Which, you know, if, if something were to happen and you guys didn't do anything, or in the midst of a storm, where, you know, you could, things could not work, people are not going to be forgiving. They're gonna, they're gonna say, and I think rightly so, they're gonna say, well, yeah, what's, you know, it doesn't make sense. I mean, so I guess I'm trying to help, just as one elected official in our little city, because we went through that, because I feel that sometimes there is some irrational embedded laws or restrictions, and somebody's got to be able to dispense with them. And it's probably, I'm sure it's not you, or maybe it is you, if, if you have that authority to go in for emergency. So why, why not do it now? I guess that's the bottom line of my question, why not do it now? And we can go all in help, I can carry buckets of mud or whatever, you know, I'm just, because that's how I felt that time, that's how we felt that time. We're gonna carry, we're just gonna go in the creek, and we're gonna put in a wall, and, yeah, that's it.
I, I appreciate you sharing that sentiment, that's very helpful. I would imagine that our, our board felt a similar when I shared the story with, with our board. The public code, there is specific terms requiring the imminent, immediate threat. And so that is always up to judgment of what constitutes that level. And that is the Executive Director's decision to make that determination.
Is that something that Menlo Park, my fellow colleagues, that their, that their government could, could help with that or something? You know, again, because that is kind of a irrational loop in the system. You know, you're not gonna need permission from anybody, and even if you did, if you're trying to prevent an emergency, I think people would do it, you know.
Would be happy to entertain those conversations with the, the folks who've been working with, with Executive Director Bruce and our, the people we've been working with at Tenisha and Holly at Menlo Park and Palo Alto, to have those conversations.
Yeah, I think any help they can give you would be good.
And, and if I may chime in, Directors, this is a very similar conversation to the one that we're having with Caltrans about the sediment under the 101 Bridge. They are similarly constrained by definitions of emergency and what they are enabled or allowed to do according to the regulatory structures that prevail. So I think this is an important conversation to expand, it's applicable many places.
Well, I don't, you know, I guess the last thing I'll say is, you know, maybe our legal counsel can do some research, or somebody, Valley Water, they got tons of lawyers. I mean, you know, somebody, somebody has the authority to dispense with, in my opinion. These laws were not, these laws were created by us or whatever. So I'm just trying to find that point of, you know, like I said, our experience, it was, it, it came down to that one person in the county who was in charge of emergency, who finally went along, and he probably took a chance, it probably scolded him, say, you know, why did you allow that? But he did. So I'm just, you know, this is a, maybe more drastic than the sediment. This is a rail line, I mean, this is the train, you get images of the train falling in the creek. I mean, I, you know, it's just like, this is much more serious in a way than the sediment to me, although, you know, that is too, but anyway. Maybe our state legislatures, everybody, Congress representatives, they all should be offering help at this point.
Thank you, Director Ruben. I'm gonna go to Director Ku, but I do want to, I think, make the point that in your frustration, and which I share, of course, is, is, is sort of very focused and, and sort of truncated in, in what we get when there is a, you know, alphabet soup of government agencies that have to chime in. But really, that same issue is, is present over what is the, the opus of the JPA itself? And that is, is securing the areas around the creek from flood. And you have more of a track record of this than anyone on this, this board, or anyone on this, in this room. And if we go back to 1998, like, right, for a lot of residents, and Mr. Hitchens I know is one, is like, we're some, you know, more than a decade later, getting closer to 30 years, and still have not really provided relief. And, and so it is, I'm only validating what you're seeing to some degree, only saying that it is, is a bigger issue. But I think we can, I can share and understand Caltrain's frustration because I think we've seen it in a slow motion, as you look at the JPA zone projects. Director Ku.
So Director Ruben, thank you very much for advocating and asking the questions. Obviously, we all are feeling a little bit urgent here with this bridge and the condition that is. So the Army Corps Section 404 is, addresses the historical aspect of the permit? Or what does it all entail, the 404?
Mike, do you want to take that one for us?
Sure, good afternoon, Chair Combs and Directors. My understanding is that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Section 404 permit addresses issues, hydraulic issues, under the jurisdiction of, of the Army Corps, of course. But the Army Corps also has an obligation to assess, determine, and engage the State Historic Preservation Office when the Army Corps deems that's, that's necessary. And in this case, due to the historic resources in and around the creek, the Army Corps did make that determination, and, and that is the, that is the reason why the Section 404 permit has been delayed relative to previous projections.
Thank you, that, that clarified, yeah, I was just wondering what Section 404 is. And then, could we get an idea of what the emergency, the implementation of temporary stabilization looks like? If it comes to that, can you give us an idea what that looks like?
So Mike, I understand the emerging plan that's being developed by our designers is the use of super sacks. Is that still the current plan?
That's, that's the prevailing plan, yes.
And so a super sack, imagine it's about a three-foot by three-foot by three-foot poly bag that's got a lid on it, that's got handles. It holds about 2,000 pounds of river rock. So crane would lift it in place and set it down, and then pick up another one and set it down, and then stack them up, putting back essentially what the river took away. And then during the dry season, be able to pick those bags back up and then use portions of that river rock as part of the permanent solution? That's more of an engineered solution versus the temporary?
I see.
Mike, anything there that I mischaracterized?
Well said.
And then on one of the speakers, TC Ryan Flesch's question about what the cross-section, cross-section under the bridge would look like?
If I could, two questions, if I may, Director Ku. One is, I'm sure Mike probably has that at his ready, but I'm not sure whether we're allowed to show it since it wasn't part of the Agenda Science package, but whether we could provide that information as a follow-up?
Follow, I think-
I just didn't want to break-
I mean-
Didn't want to break any rules. I mean, we have 100% plans.
We can ask our clerk, but isn't, yeah, isn't the case that the information needs to be provided to the public? You know, and this is a Brown Act compliant meeting, so I haven't-
So information can be provided at the meeting, correct? As long as it's provided to the public, it can be posted on the website?
Sorry, I meant a lawyer, I didn't see everything.
And Mike, I'm making an assumption that you have that somewhere near your fingertips? Maybe not right this very second?
It is at my fingertips this second. If Chair Combs and directors would like me to put it up, I am ready anytime.
If technology allows you to do that, then let's see it.
Are you able to see a PDF cross-section?
It's not up on the screen there.
It's not on this screen, so.
It's on the Zoom screen, but it's not here.
It's on the Zoom, so people-
Also, if they send to you- Can you, can you email to someone who can share their screen?
Let me try to share mine.
Great. Because this should be shared with the public.
It certainly will remain available to the public. And the public who's seen this on Zoom can certainly see this. I think it's just, it's just limitation.
Does this work?
Mike?
From a scene-
Thank you, Kevin.
Who's Zoom screen is being shared?
Yeah, and, and-
Yeah, we will, we can email this if you guys are interested.
But while we're working on the technology, Mike, can you explain what they will be seeing in that cross-section?
I can see Kevin's screen with the cross-section up.
It's just not displaying in the council chambers?
I see, okay.
But if you could explain what the cross-section is illustrating the scope of work?
Sure, sure. I'll try and describe it in words. So as, as Caltrain Deputy Chief of Design and Construction, Bernard, pointed out, the North Creek Bank is in a near-vertical condition currently. The work will be mostly cut, as in cut and fill, meaning we will be excavating back that creek bank to reduce the slope of the bank. So the toe of the slope will remain roughly where it is today. But the creek bank will go from a near-vertical condition to a two-to-one condition, essentially making the creek at its upper elevations wider, allowing for better capacity. And that's how we are able to prevent the, any rise in the 100-year flood elevation.
So is the cross-section, the material that's used is going to be concrete or?
It will be a- Go ahead, Rob.
No, no, go ahead, Mike. Just turn it over to you.
It will be a variety of materials. I'll start from the toe of the slope, meaning the bottom of the creek bed. We will excavate and then install large boulders that will stabilize the bank and prevent erosion of the creek bed. And then those boulders will follow the slope up the creek bank, and then it will transition to what we call wrapped lifts, which are soil surrounded with layers of geotextile fabric with plantings in them. And it's through those plantings that we are able to improve habitat, improve water quality, and yet still provide better conveyance capacity to reduce the 100-year flood elevation.
Thank you. As you're speaking, I'm doing a visualization, so that really helps a lot. Thank you. For the emergency standby, you say you have cameras, but are all of the equipment and also tools close to the bridge? Or are they going to have to be transported in? Should we have to go implement the emergency?
So we're looking at a variety of techniques to make sure we keep a good eye on the bridge. One of them is enrolling in the USGS water alert. This is when the water gets above a certain elevation, it sends you an alert. So our engineers have signed up for that. The second is to make sure that we have our engineers ready to go inspect the bridge during rain events. The third is we're taking a look at monitoring systems. Like, for example, when we're building our bridges down at the Guadalupe River area, there are two bridges side by side. We're working on one, but we want to make sure we're monitoring the health of the bridge next to us. So we put prisms with a total station, it's a survey station, and it monitors the movement of those sensors. And when it moves beyond a certain limit, it sends a text alert. So we're looking to see if it's viable to install that system on the bank, on the bridge seat where the bridge rests on the foundation, and on the rail. So it's a combination of visual, making sure we know what the river is doing, and then making sure we know what the bridge is doing, and using those data sources to help inform that decision of when is it the imminent? When is it time, based on our professional judgment, to take action? And so we're looking at those combination of those three things in order to keep a good eye on the bridge.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Since we've done a cycle of directors, we'll come back. But I do want to go to public comment, because I promised, I promised, I would go back to public comment. So let's open it and back up for a second round. Oh, wow, we got it up. Luckily, and I do want to acknowledge and thank the staff. Like, obviously, we don't have or own any chambers of our own, and so we borrow chambers. And so our staff are not familiar, and I spend more time in this place than anyone, and I have no ability to show anything on any screen. So, so thank you guys very much for reading that out. But then, want to acknowledge that, like, yeah, we, you know, we have three different cities' technology we need to sort of be somewhat familiar with. Okay, so I'll open it back up to public comment, and I see Mr. Hitchens has raised his hand, so we'll kick it off with him.
I want to thank Caltrain for coming today and for doing that presentation. Great design goals. I think the board members' questions and angst appropriately reflects the lack of presenting a solution. We saw a lot about the goals. We didn't see a lot about what the actual design was. Even this picture's a little hard, because I can't see where the bridge is, you know? But what I would hope is there be a presentation of the before and after. Like, when Palo Alto does a bridge, they show you, this is what it is now, this is what it's going to look like when it's done, along with the pros and cons and risks. You know, one of the questions we want to know is, what's the risk of this solution, the temporary solution failing, right? And so like, what I would want to know, I have a background as an engineer, but what will trigger the emergency? So what level of creek rise will trigger the emergency? What is the estimated probability that the creek will rise to that? I mean, how is the board supposed to know whether we should be doing this ahead of time? You know, if you say it's like, let's say it's one-third of the creek level, then you should be building it right now. Because we know, this is El Nino winter, the probability of it going over one-third is, I don't know, 75%? So we just don't have enough information to evaluate. Also, what is the actual risk of bridge failure if nothing happens and under different scenarios? So does it need a 30-year event for a bridge failure? Or does it need a three-year event? And taking into fact that the year events are based on pre-climate change. So they're probably overly conservative or overly conservative. And what are the costs? We don't know what the costs are and the drawbacks of waiting till the soil is saturated and the creek is full to attempt to implement these. So it's, I think, because this did not talk about the solution, the risks, what triggers it, I think it's very hard for the board to evaluate whether it is and whether delaying makes sense. And they can't even ask what the trigger point is, because they just haven't been given enough information. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Are there any, I will let Ms. Harris cycle us through the online comments.
Trish Mulvey, you may speak. Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Miko. I, one question is, what's the status and plans for getting the Corps of Engineers the information from the Historic Resources Review Group? So that's the question. The comment is, "The work window that ends," in quotes, "ends on October 15th is based in large part, I think, on steelhead migration." And the natural resources agencies in the past, in other locations, and maybe for this creek as well, have been more than willing to acknowledge that the dry season doesn't specifically end on October 15th and have allowed work to continue as long as it's not raining. So in terms of the interest in, can't we just do the emergency fix and just do it now? I think it's worth exploring who would have any concerns with doing it now from the standpoint of protecting sensitive species. Those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Tom Lineflesch.
Thank you, Miko. I want to second the comments that have been made following Director Abric's discussion of this set of issues and point out that the floods of record that in 1998 and the 2022 New Year's Eve happened in the middle of the night. And all of the damage was done by the morning of, after New Year's Eve and by the morning of the 1998 flood. And so if you're not prepared at, you know, exactly the time with the crane and the bags of rocks and ready to put them in, the time it takes to implement that, it may be too late. And so I think the prudent thing to do, as Director Abric mentioned, is to get that done beforehand so that you're not going to be caught, you know, flat on your feet with the best intentions but unable to pull off the fix. So I would strongly encourage Caltrain and the member agencies to pursue that kind of approach for doing the, what had been called an emergency fix. But don't wait for the emergency, because chances are, when the emergency happens, you're not going to be able to fix things fast enough to protect the bridge and the, you know, supporting terrain around it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks for the public comments. There's a couple of things, and I'll go through another cycle of board comments, questions that I want to acknowledge. First, I do think it's important to acknowledge and thank the Caltrain team for coming to the special meeting. You guys were planned to go for our regular meetings scheduled earlier, and that didn't happen because of actions on our end and not your end. And so I want to appreciate that you, again, opening up your calendar and your schedule to kind of make this presentation. I do and appreciate you laying out the engagement with stakeholders. I do think it's important, and someone can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, and I always thought it was important that in this public forum, that this discussion and presentation happens, that the Creek Authority or JPA has no real ability to tell Caltrain, "No." And if that's wrong, then please tell me that I'm wrong, because then you're telling me I have power that I didn't know I had. And, and we have control over our projects in the creek, but the creek is not our right-of-way. And I do think that it is important that that point be highlighted, that it is the right-of-way of the city of Menlo Park, the city of Palo Alto, the county of Santa Clara, in some instances, the San Mateo. And that maybe it is, and I think this is for the Palo Alto-Menlo Park representatives on the board, to make sure that the work and engagement that has happened is really sort of seeping through the public and that there is this clear, going to be this clear stream of communication with the public in the extent to which those cities do have some ability here or some authority that that is exercised in a way that their residents are aware of and is aligned with what their residents think is appropriate. And so, again, like I say, I do think this is an important forum and discussion, but we don't, as a creek authority, have, we can give our feedback, individual or even as a collective, but I can't tell Caltrain, "That's a bad idea. No, you can't do it." And so I do think it's important that we level set on that. And so now we'll bring it back for another round of board questions, comments. Director Eisenberg.
So, thank you so much for that. And most of all, I want to thank the public for your comments. It went out of your way to come here and advocate on behalf of the community, and that's huge. And again, thank you for being here as well and, you know, rescheduling for our rescheduled meeting. First, I want to say, Valley Water actually has a bit of an ownership stake here, and Valley Water does have a bit of a budget. So, and, you know, and that's why I, you know, I do think Valley Water's involvement is relevant to this, probably more relevant than Stanford, I'm just thinking. And also, we are on this JPA. But again, I don't know what happened, and I'm not complaining about anything. I'm just kind of putting it out there, and I still have to meet with my own staff. So my question, you know, the public asked so many questions that were on my list, and I hope that I, and while we can't answer them, we do have the ability to repeat them and seek the answers. And so one of the, so one of the questions that was raised that I really, really am grateful for is the planning aspect. And while you do have a lot of engineers and a couple other, another public speaker kind of alluded to this too, is that there's some pretty significant material, huge changes in our circumstances that have occurred due to ever, you know, increasing- that are, of, in our circumstances that have occurred due to ever, you know, increasing problems caused by climate change. And so a lot of our former models are simply wrong. They're just, they're just wrong, you know? And everything from evaporation, you know, being much faster to, you know, pollution levels, I mean, I could go on and on and on. That, the climate change and, you know, the human behavior leading to it is, is really changing a lot of these things. So, and before I ask, are you working with environmentalists? And again, you know, knowing now that we haven't really seen a formal plan, I just really want to urge you to work with environmentalists, not just engineers, scientists, and really let science lead this, really let science lead this. I did hear you refer to, you know, plantings, which I think you're referring to re, you know, restoring natural habitat, like native habitat? Is that what you're talking about? A habitat restoration?
Mike, do you want to provide more clarity for that?
Yes, these are specifically, I believe they're willows, but they are all native species.
Right. So I was really happy to hear that because, again, like I mentioned before, the restoration of native habitat is a very effective tool. It's something that often doesn't occur to engineers because they like to build things, right? You know, building things, that's cool, interesting. It's also very expensive. Restoration of native, sorry, I didn't mean any insult to the, the engineers whom I respect greatly, you know? And, you know, my daughter's an engineer, but she's a computer engineer, so whatever. And that's actually in the School of Science, but anyway, but I digress. But yeah, so, but restoration of natural habitat really has been proven, especially in this context of, of massive climate change and the massive climate crisis that has been created, that is a very effective way, surprisingly effective. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that's at one of your strategies. So yay. Okay, the second thing is kind of, I, I, you know, Director Koo mentioned this, and I just want to kind of get the answer to this. Oh, and wait, before I move on, also environmentally, I am grateful to the public speaker who did call out protecting our sensitive species. Thank you for that. We do need that to happen. That is important to us. It is important to us. And like with the habitat, it does help us mitigate harm from these. So yay. This is really about the Army Corps of Engineers and the permit. So when a permit is withheld, like especially when it comes to Historic Resources, and here you point to this, this tree, you know, the Palo Alto tree, which I got to say might be silly, but it really means a lot to many of us. It really does. And there are probably indigenous, you know, relics down there, and that means a lot to us too. So are you changing your, so sometimes when I hear, oh, we just got to hear about this problem with the permit, I hear about, I hear plans such as we're going to convince them to give us our permit anyway. I just want to clarify that that isn't in the best interest of, of these, my community, you know? And what we, we want to hear, what usually the Army Corps of Engineers, what regulators want to hear is that you've changed your plan, not that you've changed their minds. So I'm hoping that you are in the process of adjusting your plan so that you will protect El Palo Alto and you will protect indigenous, you know, potential indigenous ancient ruins, ancient relics, which are hugely important and has been pretty much trashed by Stanford and by many of our, in our communities. So just being blunt, as you can kind of be for being, so are you, so that's really my remaining question here is, are you changing your plan when you meet, to, to do those, make those important changes on behalf of our community?
I, I appreciate that question, and Caltrain is committed to protecting the cultural resources, the historic native sites and other items that we all value. We, as I mentioned, we worked in an iterative process, walking through from an initial concept through the final design, leaning in hard to make sure that we protected not only El Palo Alto tree, but doing research in the various databases for cultural and historic elements that may be there and making sure that we weren't impacting them. So the team developed the designs using that, trying to find, are there elements there of concern and how should we accommodate the design? And Mike probably has more details on that.
So I was really hoping for a yes, a yes, we're changing the designs.
The answer to the question is yes, but I wanted to give you some details of the how.
Yeah, because between I, I just, between Caltrain and the Army Corps of Engineers, I kind of trust the Army Corps of Engineers more when it comes to preservation of, of ancient relics and of natural habitat, because that's like kind of what they do all the time.
Right. And we've reached out to the 12 representatives of the tribes, asking for information if there's anything in those areas. And Mike, are there other details?
I, I think you covered it well, Rob. You know, it's, I, I don't think that the Army Corps has flagged any problems with the design. Neither has the State Historic Preservation Office. It's more of a, a matter of going through the process to make sure that the, that the right people also validate the current design.
Well, usually you need to have an expert there while the operations are happening. And usually it is that expert there is the expense of the, of the party that is doing the work.
Absolutely.
So I hope you have agreed to that. I mean, this is really important stuff. I mean, we just can't, I, I personally can't abide the destruction of any more indigenous artifacts. It's, it's just, it's just a huge shame in our history.
That's, that's part of our standard specification, to make sure we have those, that expertise onsite during excavation and the work.
So I guess I still am a little confused why they're, why they haven't given you the permit yet.
Like I said, the Army Corps of Engineers, it was in the discretion to seek the concurrence from the State Historic Office, and that process takes several months. And so they're waiting for that process. We've given them all the information. They've submitted that information to the State Historic Office. It just takes time.
So in my experience, just saying, I, when that kind of situation happens, there's often an opportunity to actually make certain changes. It's either, you know, we'd rather you do it this way, but if you insist on doing that way, then we have to run it by this other party. So if there is that opportunity to just compromise more, spend a little more money, that's, I'm not saying it's here now, but it's often the case that it's, that, you know, you can kind of overprotect and avoid that step. I would, I would, you know, I can't tell you what to do, obviously, as, as the chair said, but I do think that would better serve our community.
I don't believe that that was the case, Director. Yeah, please.
Sorry for the reach here. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Director Bruce. Good afternoon, Navi Dollywall Government Community Affairs Officer at Caltrain. I was a part of the more latter conversations with the USACE, especially just given the importance that this project had and the, the level of concern the community had regarding this project and this, and these efforts. And I want to assure you that in every step of the way, Caltrain has been working very closely with our permitting agencies and really working hand in hand collaboratively to ensure that we're meeting whatever standards, procedures and protocols that the USACE has established in order to provide a permit. And so I, I want to do that assurance because we're continuing to meet with our environmental team. Mike Boomsma, who's on the line, is continuing to keep that line of communication open to ensure that we're, we're hearing what the USACE's concerns are, and we're making sure that we're doing whatever work they need in terms of submitting necessary reports, abiding by whatever their procedures or protocols are to advance this effort. So I, I wanted to emphasize that because I, I hear the level of concern there, and, and I want to make sure that we, we, from a Caltrain agency perspective, are, are very clear in our respect of that environmental procedure in order to carry on this work.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to make one other note, just on the, the level of community engagement and message and coordination that was brought up early on. And I just want to emphasize in terms of why engaging Stanford? And I think really it's because we recognize that there's also this adjacent bike and pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian bridge. And members of the community whom we've engaged with, the city of Menlo Park, we've engaged with the city of Palo Alto, on just, we're making sure that we can apply the necessary noticing ahead of the, the efforts that we were planning for during this year's creek window. Terms of working with Stanford, it was also recognizing that there are students who are traveling between that Menlo Park, Palo Alto, and whatever uses to make sure that they're, they're aware if there's going to be any sort of impact, that we're bringing in the necessary individuals and the necessary community members just to, just to provide notification. And so I, I definitely want to just highlight, if there's additional, or agencies, institutions that you believe would be critical in bringing in, in terms of providing outreach, then I'd love to, I'd love to hear more about that. And I just wanted to speak to that in terms from the community lens, because...
Actually, that's really helpful. I, I do want to say that if you want to reach Stanford students, the best way is not through Stanford administration, it's to Stanford students. So like Stanford has a bike coalition.
Absolutely.
Stanford has, you know, many different student organizations. You know, it's kind of like speaking to management to address problems of workers. It's, it's like two different incentives, two different goals, and, and it's, I just don't think that is the most effective way to reach students. If you want to reach students, reach students.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, and I would encourage that. I mean, I, you, I mean, I think involve everyone. You know, I think, I think, I know there's limited on time, but you know, if you have noticed, I'm really into like public participation. So, but I do, you know, I do want to, I do want to, even though I'm kind of annoyed about all this and all that, it's not because of you personally. And I do really appreciate your work here, and I recognize you have a really, really hard task ahead of you. I also want to point out, there's a lot of intelligence in our community, you know, and that, you know, people, our community, this, this whole area is very highly educated and really involved and has a lot of great things to say. So you only benefited like now by hearing from some of them, and I applaud you for being here today to do that. And, you know, I got to also just say as an aside, I love Caltrain. I wish it were expanded. I'm so looking forward to electrification. I think Caltrain is really important for our sustainable, you know, future. So thank you really for your, for your work, and I do wish you were better funded. So thank you for that.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I had a, just out of curiosity, on the bridge itself, does the bridge on both ends, both banks, does it just sit, the rails, or is it just set on the ground? Or does it sit on like pillars that one cannot see? Are there like cement pillars that it's actually sitting on? Or is it only on the dirt? I always wondered about that.
Mike, do you want to describe the foundation system for the bridge?
Sure. I'll, I'll give you the facts, and that is, there is some form of a concrete abutment sticking up above the ground. Beyond that is a structural engineer's assumptions about what that abutment would have looked like based on how designs were done about 120 years ago. And it's, it's that lack of certainty about what that foundation looks like that underscores our concern and the urgency of the project.
Because the bridge is 122 years old.
Right. Yeah, no, definitely appreciate the concern because, you know, I, I'm just reacting as a regular person that, and, and, you know, these days, the weather, I mean, I, I think our, one of our speakers talked about the probabilities and all of that, which I understand, I'm not an engineer, but I did enough study of statistics and probability stuff. So yeah, it, world operates on probabilities, but to me, these days, the weather, just like last year, you know, who would have thought that what happened, happened right here? Nobody was operating under that. And so I, I go back to, you know, my initial comments and, and hope that, well, I guess I will ask through our director, I would like to have an answer on this question of authority. I think as our chair is reminding us, one, because we are a joint authority, but what exactly do we have authority for? We don't have authority for just whatever, you know? It'd be nice in a certain way, but we don't. So everybody has their authorities, that's how government operates. And I would like to know, you know, it wasn't to me a hypothetical question of, the director now has the authority, but, you know, the board said you have the authority, but then in case of a real emergency, will the board still have to go to the county manager? Or who do they, okay. So then I would like an answer to, do you have authority to work on it now? And if you do, then would you consider doing that? I don't know if it would take hearings. What process is there in place for that? I'm reminded of an old Mexican saying in Spanish that says, vale más prevenir que lamentar. It's better to prevent than lament. And, you know, we've been in government and we know we have to follow processes, we have to follow these, we have authority, we don't have authority. I want to know about this question of authority. Last time I found out, it was a little shorter distance. This time might be more complicated, but I would like to know. I would like to know for sure, for certain. Somebody's got to know. What is your authority? And if you have it, would you consider using it or not? Why yes or why not? And what would that take? You know, obviously there'd be probably some involvement, some public hearings or something, I don't know, before the rains start coming. Because in the middle of it, as Tom basically said, you know, last two times, it happened in the middle of the night. So how are you going to, you know, then it's going to be even worse. People are going to be even more upset than they might be now. Because, well, you said you were going to take care of the emergency and you didn't. Well, we couldn't. Okay, well, anyway, I'll stop there. But, you know, I would like through our director to find out at some point, this question of the, of authority and the process, yes or no, or whatever. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on Director Abrica's questions, but then also, what prevents you, you wouldn't need a permit to implement the temporary emergency solution?
If it meets the standard of imminent threat.
Okay, that, that imminent threat, okay. So with that, I just, I would, I hope I can use the board's name to say that we urge you to have equipment and all the tools at the site so that when that happens, the reaction is a lot more faster. It does, you know, Mr. Ryan Fresh really brings the point home, as well as Mr. Hitchens, that it's in the middle of the night, and if we have to bring all the equipment over and organize and coordinate, I think damage would have been done by then. So I would really urge Caltrain's board to reconsider and have all of their equipment at the site, ready to go. If you cannot
Yeah, we, we...
Put in everything, the temporary solution.
We have a contractor under contract, and they're currently engaged building our Guadalupe River Bridge, doing work in, during the last dry season, they were doing work in the creek, similar to the work they would be doing here. So they are fully mobilized with the equipment that would be necessary to implement this temporary solution, if necessary. But I, I do hear you loud and clear, Director Koo.
And I just have one other thing you said, like, you, you know, obviously if it, if it starts raining, that, that, you know, Caltrain personnel will, will do checks. And so is it possible to have like a 24-hour rotation? Or even to rely on, I know at Pope Chaucer, when it gets to certain levels, Palo Alto and Menlo Park people are out there, like 24/7. And, and so I, I would certainly encourage you to like either be in a position to have personnel out there all the time, or, or to rely on, on, on Palo Alto and Menlo Park. Additionally, it'd be a thing to Director Koo's point about like, yeah, where on, because that is not clear to me, like on what side the equipment needs to sit? Or do you need equipment on both sides? Like, right? As, as it leads to these, this emergency, any sort of emergency action. But again, very much appreciate all, all the, the work and, and effort. And obviously we have, we have lots of questions and lots of concerns, and I appreciate you being willing to, to, to answer them. And I do, I do think it's important to point out that like us in this area and specifically those on this board can have and have had mixed emotions or feelings about, about Stanford. I've had some very interesting exchanges with, with Stanford personnel during my time on this, this board. But they are an entity that must be engaged. Let, let's be, let's be clear, we can't, we can't not engage them, even though at times we, we have mixed emotions about, about their involvement. And so I appreciate that you have, you have engaged them and engaged them officially, and, and that they do have a role to play, not a, a...
I am an alumna, by the way. I mean, so I, it's mixed emotions is, is correct.
Certainly not, not in the way that, that they get to, to say, but, but certainly that they should be engaged. With, with that, I was going to... With with that, I was going to close this this session. And again, my appreciation for you guys coming. I know that there are some follow up here. And to be clear, what I was saying is 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 our authority, again, like, in all of those permitting agencies you talked about that you need to engage, the JPA was not one of them, right? We don't get to issue you a permit to say what your work should look like or not look like. And 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 given that reality, I very much appreciate, again, you guys taking the time to come come and talk to us.
Again, I can, I say in closing, it was really of value to lean on the experience and the talent of the the staff at the San Francisco Guido Creek JPA. They really bring a depth of knowledge, and the team really benefited from that engagement as we were working to generate solutions. So again, our heartfelt thank you for your staff's time as we engaged in this issue. It really meant a lot to us. So thank you.
I just wanted to agree. Thank you so much. It really, really was helpful. And I know how desperate, if I can use that word, our community was for some sort of answer. So we look forward to continuing this conversation. And I very agree.
All right. With that, we'll go on to agenda item 6A. This is action item aboard protocol for disruptive Zoom bombing incidents, discussion and consider possible action. I will go to the staff for a presentation on this item, and then we'll we'll open it up to public comment, and then and then board board discussion and direction.
I can take this item if if you'd like. Good afternoon, everyone. So as you may know, a number of communities throughout the Bay Area and the state of California and the country have been dealing with experiencing what we've called Zoom bombing, where there's been racist and anti Semitic comments being made exclusively during Zoom at public comment, either on an agenda item or during the general public comment period. And so we brought this item for you to discuss what action, if anything, the board would like to consider in anticipation of this of this issue coming to the board. As of now, most of these issues have been in cities, but it could occur in any public comment, including JPAs like this. So I can walk you through a couple of the options. First of all, the First Amendment does provide a right to have public comment on any item. However, there are limits that can be placed. And the the threshold is that an agency can restrict the conduct of an individual who is disrupting the meeting and preventing it from moving forward. So the options here are, as some agencies have done, is they've actually disallowed public comment completely by Zoom. There is no First Amendment right to give public comment by Zoom, but simply to just give public comment, and that can always be provided in person. In the alternative, if the board would like to continue to allowing public comment, we can suggest some protocols be put in place so that if a public commenter starts to make these types of comments, we would suggest that the board chair or general counsel, myself, state that, you know, give a warning essentially stating that, you know, these amount to offensive words, this is inappropriate in violation of the agency's common expectations of decorum, and and that it is not within the subject matter of jurisdiction of the agency or an agenda item, if it's on a specific agenda item. And then we would ask that the speaker speak respectfully on the matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the JPA, and warn them that if they fail to do so, that they may be removed from the meeting, which on Zoom means simply, you know, the clerk would mute them. And then if the speech continued, then we would state again, you know, that we recommend that the speaker be immediately removed because their speech is not related to the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency, and that the speaker's behavior is being disruptive to the meeting. And then the clerk would go ahead and move, would mute the speaker and move on to the next speaker. And we could also have a pause, a recess, if if it starts to become, you know, if there's just time after time that these interruptions keep happening. Then the least restrictive option would be to simply allow the speakers to have their allotted time, regardless of how disruptive they are. So if if you have a three minute comment period, you would have to give that same amount of time to every speaker. And then you can you can give a warning, but you wouldn't mute them until they use up their allotted time. But then you would be allowing the speech to be, you know, heard. And that has been done in some communities. But I would say the the trend is really to cut off the disruptive speech sooner, or to not allow public comment by Zoom at all. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Okay, first, let's go to public comment on this this item. So is there anyone in chambers who would like to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll defer to the clerk to see if anyone online has indicated that they'd like to make a public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the dais. Yeah, Director Eisenberg.
This is an issue I I would throw myself in front of a bus for. I think it is completely anti-democratic and outrageous that other governmental authorities, agencies are cutting off Zoom or even any like telephone access to these meetings. I think that is, I think that is absolutely wrong, even though it might be legal. It's unethical and it's counterproductive. And again, this is like one of my core, core issues. I fundamentally believe in the public's right to access and participate in their government. And this, you know, the ability by phone or by Zoom, which quite frankly, is the exact same thing because we don't allow video. I mean, it's kind of dumb. You know, there was an article, you know, Palo Alto Daily Post, if you're listening, it was really misleading for you to say that in Sacramento, they cut off Zoom because what they do allow is phone. And so that actually, you know, phone and voice by Zoom is the same thing. And in both cases, I think that that the solution is clear. You get rid of this user error. It's been user, frankly, that has allowed these people to keep talking. Yeah, you notify, you have people maybe click through one time, you know, I agree to these rules. I agree that I'll be muted if I'm breaking these rules. You know, like on Facebook and Twitter, I know they're not government agencies, but I swear, I mean, X, they're the size that they're, in some ways, they're considered acting as if they are. You know, they gate block accounts, they, you know, they they freeze accounts on the smallest thing. Now, I think we do need to let speakers speak. And in this case, think about this. We are three different cities that's that span a really large geographical area. Then there's myself in San Francisco. I mean, really, we we span such a huge area. We can't expect impacted people to to drive or take Caltrain here in the middle of the workday if they have things to say. I mean, maybe if we had meetings after the workday and and where we provided childcare, which I'm very much in favor of, you know, and and there were shuttles, you know, then, great. But for the vast majority of the public, calling in or zooming in is their way to to reach us. And I say this, I say free speech, even though I have been several times a victim of this Zoom bombing for anti Semitic and misogynist, on anti Semitic and misogynist basis. You know, I believe that the answer to speech is more speech. It is not, it is, it is not, you know, muzzling speech. That said, when it gets to be rape threats, which I've experienced, anti Semitic, racist, you know, attacks, yeah, we mute them. And we have the right to. So, you know, I I I've really been disappointed in other agencies, and I I'm confident that we're we're better than that. We can just press the mute button, go bye. And yeah, and other things that people are doing are they're requiring identification before being allowed to speak. I mean, there's so many other ways to to make these communications more secure. You have to be, you know, ident, you have to provide identification, you have to give your name, you know, et cetera. A lot of times, these these Zoom bombers are using names like that are like, you know, my name, I I just, you know what I'm talking about, like names for body parts or whatever, you know, that are clearly going to be Zoom bombers, and they're let in to speak anyway. Or so, you know, we can, we, I think we can, I think we can handle this without muzzling the public. That is my really, if you can tell, very strong belief. And I I'm I'm happy we're having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Eisenberg. Does anyone else on the dais want to chime in? I'll I'll go. So I I share your concerns, and and I think you were mostly talking about the option of not allowing video conference comments and so and then.
Well, I'm just saying, cutting them off once they start getting bad. Don't let them continue, just.
Yeah, yeah. So you would do, yeah, and but that.
Oh, but I do favor, no, I favor, I favor video, but we don't have that yet. If it were my way, we'd allow everyone to have video, but I've lost that war. So this is just operating, right now, all we allow is just voice. That's all we allow right now.
But but through a a video conferencing platform.
Right, but it doesn't matter if you're using, you know, that's your tech too, you know, it doesn't matter if you're using your your Zoom to speak just vocally or a telephone. It's the same effect. All there is 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 voice that gets through.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I understand where you're drawing the the line. And so it is, is that, again, because some communities have said that, like, only public comment in person as a response, which you are opposed to, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying we still allow for public comment by people who are not actually physically in the building, a room where that's happening, but that there should be protocols that allow us to mute those people or stop them from continuing or not? Because some communities have also, to what the general counsel for the board said, have just said, like, you get your three minutes and you can say whatever it is you want to say.
Yeah, I I do not support that. And I'm surprised that they take that because that would be, that's really, imagine three minutes of racist hate. No, thank you.
Okay, so I just, I it's so so your whole thing is is like, continue to allow comments from people not not using electronic means to to comment, but that we should exercise some protocol and ability to to respect those comments when they become racist or antisemitic.
In violation of the rules.
Although, to be clear, I think it's fair to say that, like, what that is or where you draw the line can, but but I'm, I I still understand you. I still think that, like, we we can't let the the perfect defeat the good. But I think the the, does the general counsel for the board want to chime in there?
Sure, I just wanted to say that these these comments, these Zoom bombing comments are exclusively being made by people who are, you know, who we believe are not inside the community. They're, you know, somewhere maybe across the country, who knows where, but they're not, they don't seem to be local community members. But but I do understand what you're saying, Director Eisenberg, that you you don't want to cut off the people who are legitimately making public comment. And there is, like, you had suggested another way that the Zoom access can be limited. You know, instead of posting the link on the website, there can be instructions, you know, to contact the clerk to register, and that when they give public comment, they don't just get to simply unmute and speak. They have to use the raised hand feature and then be recognized by the clerk and designated to speak. So there's all these internal, you know, functions that we can use as well.
I don't necessarily support it for us, but I'm saying for, you know, for other agencies where it's where it's a problem. Like, if we actually start to have a problem, that might be a good solution. But right now, I think just muting or hanging up is is a really good solution.
Right, with a warning. And and Chair Combs, you also had said, you know, how do you know whether this is, you know, i- is it a fine line on whether this is, you know, this sort of hate speech? If you've heard some of the comments from other agencies, it's pretty clear that these are outside the bounds of public comments that are applicable to the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. It just, the speeches go on and on, and they're just, it's it's clear when you hear it that this is the the Zoom bombing that is occurring.
Quick question for the general counsel. So if we if we actually make the rules very clear, like on the agenda, and we just say, you know, we if we warn them in advance, like, that, you know, if we hear your comments, you know, being constituting hate speeches, a lawyer, you know, would write out a definition, you know, we we will mute you or we preserve the right to mute you. Can we just rely on that instead of like giving them a warning as they're like using the N word or something, which we don't want to hear or give any complicity?
We can have the chair, if we start to see this happening at the agency, we can have the chair make a statement at the beginning of every meeting before the public comment period, that this is the protocol, and that, you know, this type of hate speech is is not tolerated, and only the speech that is related to the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency is allowed. And that, you know, giving them the warning ahead of time that they can be removed if if the speech becomes disruptive. But at the same time, it has to be made on a case by case basis. And the the warning actually is something that is written into the protocols in Senate Bill 1100, which says that you you give the warning first, and then you eject from the meeting. So the 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 warning would be required on a case by case basis.
Because you can't pre restrict.
You can't have a warning that's before someone's spoken because you don't know, right? You have to give a warning that is in response to a specific speech that has been made.
I would say, it seems as though, like, I think we're aligning that, like, yeah, I also would have concerns about not allowing people to make public comment by an electronic video conferencing platform, especially given when our meetings are, and and that that, like, essentially, the group of stakeholders is fairly dispersed for for our 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 agency. And and so I think making it as easy as possible for for them to both access the meeting and and participate, I I think is 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 for me the the ideal outcome here. I do think, though, that, like, our specific approach, or when it relates to allowing people to participate by electronic means or video conferencing, is incredibly informal. And so I I think, to which you heard from Corcoran, it's like, unmute yourself and you can speak now. So anyone on this meeting can unmute themselves at any point and and comment. And whether we should adopt a a platform or an option that, you know, requires people to raise their hand and specifically gives the clerk the ability to unmute them and then and then mute them again. And and that's, I think, a lot of city councils approach it that way. And I have, I'll be very honest, like, we have not historically approached it that way, and I've liked that. I've liked the informality, as as I was saying with the two public comments, that we we've approached in our meetings with this board. But given events, I do think we have to approach, put in some some precautions, some measures to at least help prevent, like, the meeting descending into, you know, chaos. So.
Right, and I believe right now, the board just uses the regular meeting format for Zoom, which doesn't, as you said, allow the chair or the clerk to, you know, to mute people if they've just simply unmuted. She doesn't have that control. But if if we start experiencing the Zoom bombing, that may be something that the board wants to consider allowing staff to do to purchase that, whatever that software would be, to kind of upgrade to, I think it's called webinar webinar format, so that then she would have the ability to to mute.
And and my recommendation, we'll we'll see if there is support among the board, would be that we do that now, only because we have had a, not a official board meeting, but a community member, a community meeting sponsored by the board that was Zoom bombed, and our only recourse was to end the meeting. So I I did not attend that that meeting, but I know it happened, and I have a colleague who who was quite, you know, in the the manner of these things disturbed by it. And so I I wouldn't want to, again, like, so I think that at least a limited precaution on our part would be to invest in upgrading our abilities. As as, so in that case, we're not put in the position of just our own recourse. If you've got five people that are just going off mute and and just going, you know, going at it, then our only recourse, I I don't want to be in a position that our only recourse is just ending the meeting.
I support that.
If I could, for a moment, Chair.
If I could, for a moment, Chair, thank you for bringing up the history, because we have had, we did have that incident. As a result of that incident, just to clarify, because I know our members of the public are probably saying some things, we do require a registration for our meetings, so they have to register before they can receive the link. And just to also clarify, our members who do join, they can turn their videos on. We've never restricted that, so that, that is something that the JPA does allow.
Thank you.
If I could have a follow-up question to that, so if the speakers are allowed to turn their videos on, does the clerk have the ability to stop the video if they're showing racist messages? I've seen that before as well.
So I've been working with the Zoom settings, and yes, we do. Right now, what we don't allow is images, so all you see is the names. Previously, we did, but in trying to be prepared for any additional Zoom bombings, the settings have been changed, so the images are not allowed. But yes, the, the videos can be blocked. But if we move to a webinar format, as the Chair has suggested, that would also eliminate that.
Director Brika, did you want to chime in?
No, I agree that, that function of raising your hand, and I think it's, should be done now. Because we've already experienced that, and so that's some control. And then, yeah, I think having some protocols at, at discretion of the Chair, that, that works for me.
Okay, well, then, I'll, I'll make a motion then on this, this item, that one, direction to staff to explore whatever needed investment to upgrade the video conferencing platform, or level that we use that will allow us greater control over people providing, people providing comment. And, and to also, to the General Counsel of the Board, to explore some sort of memorialization or written rules, guidelines as it relates to instances in which the Chair might sort of exercise discretion to warn people that their comments are likely to result in them being removed from the meeting and, and being muted, and then to, then action on that if, if, if the comments continue in that vein. And so that, that would be my, my, my motion, am I missing anything there?
Second?
Okay, so we got a first and a second, and then so I will do a roll call vote. Director Brika?
Yes.
Director Ku?
Yes.
Director Combs, yes. Director Eisenberg?
Yes.
Okay, four, zero, the motion passes, so thank you. With that, we'll move on to information items, so seven A, Budget Finance, Year-to-Date Expenditures Report.
This is pretty simple, this is just for your background and information, so that you see where we are tracking to date. We are at or slightly below our projected budget expenditures for the year. Some things come in, invoices come in a little later, or some expenses are budgeted for later in the year. We are on track, essentially, for the year. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, seeing none, then, let's move on, and then I'll do a collective, a public comment for all of the information items. So then we'll move on to seven B, with his Executive Director's Report.
Great, as you read in your packet, we have spent a great deal of time and effort in the last month or two working on winter preparedness, working with our member city Public Works and Public Safety Staff. One thing I wanted to, unfortunately, without the benefit of our Caltrain colleagues here, but one thing I did want to mention is that this year, the Caltrain conversation has resulted in their joining the Multi-Agency Coordinating Group, or the MAC. So there is now additional coordination, not only with Caltrain, but also with Caltrans. So these conversations have both deepened and strengthened our network of colleagues that we are coordinating with in emergencies and for winter preparations. So as you know, we had an event on October 26th, I think that was a very successful event. I wish it had been better attended, but there were about 20, 25 very attentive community members who participated. We had great presentations from our member agency colleagues. We even had a hands-on demonstration for how to stack and fill and place sandbags that actually got a round of applause. So hands off to, to Michael Wong in Palo Alto for that great demonstration, along with the support of his colleagues. And everyone who participated in their presentations did a phenomenal job. We had a great en banc Q and A session, it seemed like 90% of the questions were for Mr. Kevin Lewis from East Palo Alto, and he handled them with grace and aplomb. And I think that the event was overall very successful. We'll be doing a similar one for the community members who are residents of the Sand Hill properties in East Palo Alto on November 16th. So that will be kind of an abbreviated version. I don't think we're going to have all the hands-on demonstrations, but we'll have the content anyway for that group of residents. Moving on, let's see, Member Public Works teams Valley Water Coordination, let's see, all of the, the coordination with the MAC. We're, we're looking at a, a MAC tabletop exercise. Chief Ken Duker has scheduled something for, preliminarily for early December. This will be a scenario where all of us get together and, in a very serious way, play, pretend, and walk through contingencies, how to, how to address an emergency circumstance if there is not only one emergency, but maybe two. So this gets us on our toes, make sure we have thought through and talked through all of the different ways that we might communicate, problem solve, what resources are on hand, and who's on tap to provide those things. We are, as, as Chair Brika mentioned, we're in communication with Caltrans about the sediment at 101. This is a difficult issue, and I want to stress again that this is one of those difficult places to act proactively. Our state in its care and concern for regulatory process that is transparent, deliberative, and inclusive also creates a circumstance that makes proactive action very difficult. Caltrans does not have a systematic permit for all of its bridge crossings where sediment may accumulate. It has to address these maintenance issues on a case-by-case basis. Those permits for those case-by-case actions take a long time to obtain. We are working with them, a working group is being set up between their technical staffs, some of our Public Works colleagues, and our colleagues at Valley Water, to have a conversation about what creative solutions there might be on tap. And if there are not easy creative solutions where we can collaboratively address this maintenance issue, it may be a policy question that we will collaborate with them on to make proactive action, like taking, taking action before the creek is overflowing, a, a more realistic possibility. So that's unfortunately not something I'm going to have a positive outcome for you before the rainy season, but this may be something that not only moves the needle for us, but maybe the whole state. So, future attractions. We are working with our contractor to install additional rainfall and creek monitoring, creek level monitoring stations. Last winter, we had a couple of our monitoring tools disabled just because of storm impacts. So having some, those have been repaired and replaced, but now we're going to have some redundant material as well. Reach to project updates, we are clarifying with the City of Palo Alto on the Newell Bridge, and all signs that I have heard is that it is on track. We will clarify that, and we'll have a more public discussion about how that process is going forward and what the dates are confirmed with Palo Alto. Let's see, the independent analysis of our hydraulic models and the channel survey is coming to us from our contractor, Chef and Wheeler, any day. So we will look forward to having that report delivered to us. Staff will take a couple of days to digest that material. We will be working with and meeting with our staff colleagues from our member agencies to have a very full conversation about what we see from that report. We are developing a decision-making rubric, if you will, and a schedule for how we will move forward based on the information that we have and the analysis that we have coming out of that hydraulic analysis. I'm looking forward to bringing that to you, at least in preliminary form, at our November 16th meeting. We won't have answers for you about, okay, so exactly what this is going to look like after that, but we'll at least have a, a debriefing for you about what we've learned. We are continuing to look for grants and funding for all of our project endeavors. And I think everything else is pretty perfunctory, and I'm going to be out next week as I go shake hands and make friends in Washington DC, so that all of the agencies we work with, all of our congressional representatives, both here locally and their, their staff locally, and their staff in Washington DC, are familiar with the organization and the projects we're working on. So that about sums it up.
Cool, I, I also want to call out that I know that you personally and the, and the staff have been doing a fair amount of tours of the creek in, in recent weeks for key, key stakeholders, and so extend my appreciation for, I know, all of the time, the effort, the scheduling that is required for that, but all of the feedback I have gotten has been, has been really great, and I think it has really been valuable, valuable for, for us when it comes to, like I say, engaging key stakeholders. Cool, with that, I will open up, were you going to say something?
Just that it's been a pleasure to have those tours, to answer your questions, and to show off the projects. And I, speaking on behalf of, of my staff as well, it really is a pleasure to work with you guys. So thanks for your enthusiasm, thanks for everyone's participation.
Cool, and hopefully no, no splinters.
Or poison oak, or anything else.
Going down, okay, so I'm going to open up a public comment or call for public comment for the informational items, so seven A and B, if there's anyone in chambers or online who would like to make a public comment on, on these items, please do so now, okay, cool.
Line, Tom, Tom Ryan Fleisch?
Thank you, just a quick question, Margaret. When can interested members of the community expect to see a copy of the Chef and Wheeler Report?
Tom, I would like to have our staff take a look and digest it first. I'm thinking probably by the, let's see, what is the week of the 6th sometime, we'll post it on the website.
Six of November?
Yes, sir, sometime.
Or December.
Yeah, sometime the week of November 6th, so if Monday, so next week, I think that's next week. I'm losing track of my calendars.
Is, is there another public comment, or, okay, no, no, no public comment. And we'll just note for the, the record that 307 Director Brika had to go for another engagement, but that we still have form, and we're coming to, and, and I also want to acknowledge very much supportive of the Executive Director's upcoming trip to DC. I think it's only valuable that we get some face time with, again, key stakeholders, key people who have, people and entities that have an impact on, on our projects. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item A, Board Announcements, Information Items and Requests. I'll quickly open it up to public comment, does anyone want to provide public comment on this Agenda Item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it to the Board if there is any announcements. Director Ku?
I'm sorry, I don't have any information or requests, but just to go back to the item that Margaret reported on for the sediment management, may I speak, may I?
Of course, yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to find out, so short-term work of even clearing the sediment in there is not going to take place before the rains?
No, what we are able to do is take the weeds out. We are working with one of our local community colleagues at Grassroots Ecology to have some of the weeds that have grown up in that sandbank out, so that in the winter rains, it's easier for it to flush down the channel. It is very difficult to access that part of the channel and to get equipment both in the channel and under the bridge. So it is a multi-million dollar, multi-month endeavor to do that. What Caltrans needs to do is develop a permit with the relevant regulatory agencies that allows them to do that on a maintenance, routine maintenance basis. So that takes a long time, as has been pointed out by all of this information from Caltrain, it would be so much better if we could do things proactively and not wait for an emergency in a more expeditious way. So we are working again with our community colleagues, agency colleagues, to see what we can do to help facilitate that.
So is there any backup plan in case it starts to fill up over there? Is there some idea of what will take place in order to divert water, I don't know?
Good, good, good question. Caltrans has a plan to have visual monitors in high-storm events, just like Caltrain has said, they're going to have people monitoring things. They are ready with equipment and personnel to, for example, if there are logs or things that are jamming up underneath the bridge and curtailing the conveyance capacity, to take that out. After that, there's not a lot they can do. They can do those kinds of things in an emergency, but when the water is flowing, it's very difficult, maybe physically impossible, to get an excavator into the creek to move that accumulated sediment.
So that might be a choke-up point, then?
It's, you know, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm not a sediment movement engineer expert, but everything I have heard is there are just as many chances that the sediment will be mobilized and moved. In high-flow events, it scours it away, and it's when the water slows down again that the sediment will drop out. So it may move in a high-flow event, but then some may come back again as it slows down. So is it a choke point, maybe? Is it not a choke point, maybe?
I know, it's difficult to answer, it, it's just leaving it up in the air and not having a way to resolve, to know and be reassured that it won't be a choke point and, and that it won't flood over there. So I, I think in terms of reassurance, it's not very reassuring at all, so thank you, agreed.
And just to reiterate, I mean, to your point, it's like, essentially, the authority to act and do something only exists when it may be impossible to actually act and do something.
Exactly.
Please, Director Eisenberg.
I'm, I'm really grateful that Mayor Ku brought this up, and, you know, and Chair Combs, you know, kind of echoed it, because it's, this, if I remember correctly, was one of the items that Jenny, the professor at Stanford, remember her last name, Professor?
Dr. Sukail.
Dr. Sukaila, thank you, that she had brought up when she was presenting that, and, and this kind of was a why, a little bit why I was triggered about the meeting with Stanford, is that if I understood her correctly, it was that Stam, what a lot of environmentalists and, and engineers want is for Stanford to better manage the, the sediment. So actually, like, a lot of these problems could be mitigated by Stanford, if I understand correctly. Is that correct, if they, because doesn't a lot of this sediment, doesn't some of it originate at Stanford? And it, couldn't they actually take on some of the burden of? That was what I understood from meeting her, that they could, they, they have the money and the ability and the access to actually reduce some of the sediment or manage its flows, is what I thought I heard from her.
So, so the answer is really complicated and would require more time than any of us have this afternoon.
I'm not asking for it to be answered as much as I wonder if anyone is working on it.
But your question is a really important one, and one that we are trying to untangle with the agencies, with Stanford, with Valley Water. The Searsville Dam has trapped many, many millions of cubic yards of sediment. Some of that will come down the channel when. Some of that will come down the channel when presumably when Stanford cuts a hole in the Searsville Dam. But there's sediment that comes from all over the watershed. Creeks move sediment, water erodes soil and rock, that's its job. It conveys those sediments through the channel to the bay, so not all of the sediment comes from Stanford land.
Of course, but I'm just saying that they should manage their own sediment, the sediment that does come from them. That should be just obvious that they should. Where is that hole coming?
Uh, you know what? I don't know because there's they have they they they're in their sequo process and it's a lengthy detailed process. And it's not a schedule I think anybody has clear and fixed dates on. And from a practical point of view, they cannot do their work until our work is done because their project design depends on our project design and implementation. That whole working from downstream to upstream. And we have to work very closely with them as watershed partners to manage the sediment, to manage the creek channel and to ensure. The health and safety of the Riparian Corridor and all of its denizens.
Director Ku, did you want to say something? Okay, cool. Well, with that, I think we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.